All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, August 22 special meeting for the Board of Selectmen outside of our normal schedule and here with a specific topic tonight, which is to introduce Bernie Lynch from Community Paradigm Associates, who will be the lead consultant for the Town Manager search. So before we get started, we did have one last minute application that came in for a block party earlier today, and it is before our next meeting. Police and fire have weighed in. I did just want to bring it up to the board. I think we're all good to move forward with it, but it's for 34 Pine Acres. Kelly Ellis put in the application September 4th with a rein date of September 5th from 3:00 to 7:00. So if there's no objections, I would like to take a motion. We don't want to get in the way of a block party.
Motion to approve a block party application for Kelly Ellis at 34 Pine Acres Road on Sunday, September 4th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. Thanks for your patience, Bernie, while we just take care of that. So just to set the stage, we issued an RFP for the Town Manager recruitment. We all know that Bill will be leaving. His current contract goes through January 29th of 2023, and then we have an agreement with him to stay on as needed as an acting Town Manager that could go through June 30th, but it allows us some flexibility, you know, for when we want to hire someone. We did issue the RFP. We had four respondents, and in the municipal world, it does go to the lowest bidder, who was Bernie. We're fortunate to have Bernie here. I know he had helped us, you know, throw out some steps of the way, and then I had talked to someone in another town who had used him and been very pleased with them as well. So I think we were very happy to see what we've been meeting with you. So the point for today, there'll be many meetings that will come of this. This is really just step one. Bernie is here today to walk us through what this will look like. I think we all have a lot of questions, and everyone's a little bit antsy, but fortunately, I think we have a lot of time. We're actually pretty well on time. But the point of the meeting, he's going to walk us through what it will look like from here. We'll try to wrap up in about 45 minutes or so and then see if we have any questions after that. All right.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight, and we're looking forward to working with the town of Foxborough. Just a little bit of background. I know you've all seen our proposal, and you know a little bit about Community Paradigm and me, but for the public watching, I thought I would just talk a little bit about, you know, who we are and what we do and sort of our experience in this area. Community Paradigm was started in 2014 after I decided to resign my position as city manager for the city of Lowell, a position I'd held for almost eight years, which is a long time for the city of Lowell. It's like double the average. You have to go back to the 1950s to find someone who'd been there as long as I was there. So I'm very proud of what we accomplished, but I'm also proud of the fact that I survived and I lasted a good, long time there. The, you know, my purpose in starting Community Paradigm at that time was to keep my hand in municipal government. I'd served, as I said, in the city of Lowell, but also about 20 years with the town of Chelmsford as their first Town Manager, as well as a number of other, bit of other work that I'd done with municipalities during the beginnings of my career that goes back a few years before that. And, but, so I wanted to keep my hand in it and help communities wherever I could in terms of public management projects and do some teaching at Suffolk University, as well as at UMass Lowell, where I'd been an adjunct faculty member for a number of years. Specifically with Suffolk, I've been very involved with the local government and management certificate program, which a number of your employees have gone through, including Christina. So, and so we, I really expected to sort of just dabble. This is my introduction to sort of the market, if you will. I have a number of, I expected, let me start it this way. I expected to dabble in it a little bit, perhaps do a recruitment or two each year. But the market in the turnover of managers here in Massachusetts, and really across the country, has just been overwhelming. In that period of time, in that roughly six years, more than, well, about two-thirds of the communities have turned over here in Massachusetts. It's been just a staggering amount of change, which makes for a very competitive market. Now, I do think that that's changing a bit, particularly in sort of this geographical area and a little bit farther north, where we're starting to see people now ready to move into these positions. So I'm very optimistic that with a town like Foxborough with such a good reputation that it has, with the challenges that it presents, the opportunities it presents, that we'll be able to get you some good candidates. And so that's certainly a positive. But it is, it does mean that over that period of time, is roughly two-thirds, which is some 200 or so, communities have gone out looking for managers. We've done, this will be roughly 90 searches that we've done over that period of time. So I think we've honed this down to a process that we feel very confident and comfortable with, yet at the same time, we don't come in and just try to do a cookie cutter approach. We treat every community that we work with as they are, a unique community with specific needs and the way that they go about executing the search. We're there to work with you, to advise, to find you candidates, to manage the process from start to finish, to make sure that you get a manager that can move into the position. And we want that individual that's chosen to meet what you want from a Town Manager, the skills, the attributes, the understanding of the issues that Foxborough presents. And so that's built very much into our process, and so I wanted to preface it with that. I do have a number of other people that work with me that will be working on this. We have Sharon Flaherty, another principal with Community Paradigm, is basically the one that many of you, as you'll hear me speak in a moment about how we go about this, but will be speaking to many of you to understand your perspective about the town and what you're looking for from the manager. She does all of those interviews, does all of the research on the candidates, helps do the developing of the questions that we go into the interview process with, and does considerable amount of work on the background and reference checks of your candidates. Her background is in journalism, and she brings that sort of journalistic approach that reporters eye to, you know, sort of understanding the community. John Petron will also likely be involved. John is a longtime manager, retired manager here in the state, including the town of Burlington, as well as towns of Ashland, Harvard. He served actually in the school department in the city of Marlboro at one point in time, so he brings in a little bit different perspective from that sense. Ray Santilli is another member of the team that's in the proposal. Ray spent about 17 years, I believe, as the assistant manager for the town of North Andover, focusing in on many of the nuts and bolts issues that take place within a community. And he had about 22 years as director of administration and budgeting for, and personnel for the Cambridge Police Department. So he has a little bit of a different background in that regard as well. So that's the team that will be sort of working on the Foxborough search. What is up here, and I think you all have copies of it, is the projected timeline, and that might be a good way to use that as a way of sort of understanding the steps of the process. And it's built around our own experiences of conducting those 90 or so, or almost 90 searches, but it's also tied in with your request for proposals. We've tried to build in key dates that were included within the RFP. So for instance, starting off, and this shows really week one of the process, starting off with a meeting with the chair to talk about the process. You know, in some respects, we're doing that now, but certainly we built this into the original timeline with that understanding that we would have that introductory conversation about how this is all going to play out over a period of time. And it's built around the dates that you described of when Bill would be leaving the position and when you need someone on. Right up front, during the month of September, it's our intention to consult with you. You are the executive body of the town, the chief executive body. You're the ones that have to make the choice of what you want from a Town Manager, what you need from a Town Manager. So clearly, you're the voice of the people here in Foxborough as to what's important, what we should be looking for. We want to hear from you. So that will entail that interview that will be held with Sharon and possibly me as well, likely by Zoom is the way we're doing much of this now. We find it to be easier to sort of assemble people's schedules that way, and we can be very flexible in that manner. So that's likely the way that that would take place. We would also be looking to conduct interviews with key department staff, the department heads that you have. We have a questionnaire that we send out to the department heads to gather information about their departments, the basic information, budget, staffing, a little bit about the staffing in terms of union contracts and so on. But also, we want to know from them what their major projects are, what their issues are, and then what type of sense they might have about what they would like to see in the new Town Manager. And then we've always built in the opportunity for some type of community listening process. You know, we used to do it through forums. We would come often to the library, and we would hold a forum where we would invite people in and ask the question of what, those same basic questions. What does the town of Foxborough need, want, and what do you want to see in your Town Manager? We didn't necessarily have the best turnout. Citizen and community engagement is always a challenge with people's schedules. We would have, you know, maybe six, 10 people, most cases come to these forums. In some cases, we'd get 30 or 40 people, but for the most part, it was that six to 10. What we've moved towards now is a community survey that we find to be a little bit more productive with just some basic questions and then some open-ended questions that we can gather information, again, to help us prepare a community or a position profile, position statement, but also it serves as valuable information for your screening committee, well, for us as we go out and recruit, for your screening committees as they assess candidates, and then for you, as you assess the candidates further down the road. It helps us look at those traits, but also helps us develop the questions, the interview questions that we're going to use, or the spin on the interview questions that we think is important. So, you know, as you would probably guess, many of the questions that, whether we're interviewing in Foxborough, or we're interviewing in Westwood, or if we're interviewing in Brookline, there are going to be basic questions that are going to be the same, but what's different is the follow-up questions and digging down into the specific aspects in the area of municipal finance, or the area of personnel management or economic development that is going to be geared towards more of a particular needs of a community. And so all of that information is what's assembled during that first month, and then we develop that position statement. I think we gave you one in the proposal. I can't remember who we gave you, but we gave you one that we did for another community, and that's what we would develop for the town of Foxborough. We then go off with that. First off, we get you to sign on to that. It's what you wanted to say. If you'd like to do wordsmithing, you're certainly free to do that, but what we really are interested in is the meat of the document. Do we, you know, if historic preservation is one of your top goals, we want to make sure that that's there. When we did the city of Watertown recently, we, you know, they wanted to make sure that sustainability was the big issue, and community engagement. That came out of their most recent charter change. So we wanted to ensure that that was there. We put quite a bit in. They asked for a little bit more with some specifics that they wanted mentioned. So we went through that process of getting them, that editing, getting that approval. And then with that complete, we then begin the real active recruitment. We're already doing recruiting for the town of Foxborough. On my way up here tonight, I got a couple emails from some managers and, you know, went back and forth, and one of my questions to them was, "Are you interested in Foxborough?" So we're already out there sort of trying to develop a pool for you. But with the profile in hand, somewhere around the, according to this timeline, the middle of October, that's when we'll begin our real formal recruitment process. Position announcements will be sent out to our database, which includes all the municipal managers here in the Commonwealth, managers, assistant managers, and similar type positions. We also have a number of people that have applied for positions with us in the past that might not have been the right fit for another community. They will be notified. We also have a large number of people that reach out to us because they want to become managers in Massachusetts. We're primarily Massachusetts. We've done one town in New Hampshire, one town in Rhode Island, but we're pretty much it in Massachusetts. That's where our focus is. So we get a number of people from Massachusetts coming out of state government, department heads, the nonprofit sector that decide they want to be municipal managers. They come to us. They become part of our database. We have people from outside the state that want to come to Massachusetts, or maybe grew up here in Massachusetts and want to come back. They're part of our database because they all reach out to us. Our website gets, I believe it's about 4,500 hits per month of people looking to see what's going on, and they reach out to us, and then in turn, we reach out to them. We advertise at the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We advertise in the International City and County Management Association. We advertise in the Emerging Local Government Leaders Organization, which is relatively new organization, attracting the more younger demographic. And then we circulate to various graduate programs that have job boards for their alumni, and we also try to reach out to organizations that represent a more diverse pool in terms of people of color and bringing more women, the Women Lean in Government Organization and the League of Women in Government that we have advertised with in the past. We do that over the span of four weeks. Now, when we do it for four weeks, I will tell you that sometimes I wonder whether we should just do it over a week, or we should do it over a longer period of time, because it never fails. Most of the applications or resumes are submitted to us on the last day in the last half hour. So, and I pull my hair up because I've assembled this whole package, and then suddenly they start coming in with half an hour to go. But, you know, we pull them all together. As they come in, we do review them. We start doing the background checks. Now, the background checks we do at that point are basically taking advantage of the internet, or if they're in Massachusetts, starting to talk to people who might know of these people. You could probably guess with the 40 years that John, Ray, and myself have in local government, and our involvement, John and I, my involvement in the Suffolk program and the people we get to meet as a result of that, we know pretty much everyone that's out there. But if we don't, we're going to do some background checks. We're going to find out what we can about them so that when it's all done, we can assemble the pool of candidates in a way that we can then sit down with your screening committee, which you will have appointed by that point in time, and we can go through each one of the candidates that we have and say, "Well, these are strong. These are interesting. These might be very qualified, might be very talented people, but they, we wouldn't put them at the top of your list." And we will flag those that have issues that should be brought out and put on the table. Maybe it's the circumstances of why they left their last job, maybe, you know, it could be a number of possible stories that need to be told, or questions that need to be raised, so that everyone goes into this with eyes wide open. So that would take place probably towards the middle to the end of November, and we anticipate that there would be those interviews during that period of time. And this timeline calls for, this is how this timeline calls for it, but with the idea being that we would then sit down with the board and do the interview of the finalists. Excuse me, that would be the, I take that back. I'm throwing it off here. The interviews by the finalists, and selection finalists would take place by the screening committee at the beginning of December. I take that back. We'd review the resumes in November, interview in December, do our background checks, our more formal background checks, which include core checks, education verification, employment verification, and contacting references during the holidays or just after. And with the idea being that we would then bring to the board in early January, the finalists. So that's what we're looking at there. That reference checks that we do, again, this is a little unique that we do this. We actually contact four or five references for each one of the candidates. Most of the time, they say very positive things. Sometimes they don't. Hopefully, you know, we've, we pretty much take the position that we flag anything that's a problem before they get to the screening committee. But what we're interested in hearing from the references is a little bit about the candidates, their style, the types of projects they're working on, so that we can then use that to help you interview the finalists. So if we know what their specific strengths and weaknesses are, the types of projects, we can then delve into their way of doing business a little bit more.
How many finalists do you hope to bring to us? Is there like two to five?
I would say three, three or four.
Okay.
I know that sounds like I'm splitting hairs there. Two is, I want to get you more than two. We've done two in cases. It's very challenging because someone, there's always the potential someone will pull out. So if we always have three, even if we lose one as a result of that during that period of time, we still have two to go in with. After it gets over four, sometimes candidates get a little nervous because their chances diminish. So we like three or four.
And would that be the direction given to the screening committee also?
Yes. We will, in fact, I don't believe we've given you this yet, but we will prepare one for you just as a draft, and you can adjust it, a committee charge that lays out what the role of the screening committee is, and it would include bringing three to four names. We think it's important that the screening committee is there to help us, help you reach your goals of getting the types of candidates you want. So in other words, if you lay out what the priorities should be for the town in that position statement and the attributes of the candidates, we want you, we want the screening committee to work with us to go through that in evaluating the candidates and choose the ones that are appropriate for you. You know, I'm sure you're going to be putting very good people on this screening committee, but they're there to screen, not to select.
So I don't want to jump ahead. Are you going to talk a little bit more down the road about picking a screening committee, or can we ask that now?
You can ask that now. This might be, this is probably the time to do it because then we get into a whole bunch of other things that happens after the screening committee's out of business. So let's talk about the screening committee now. I recommend five to seven people. More than that becomes a challenge for scheduling, and it becomes unwieldy. So we like five to seven. I would say that most go with seven. We've seen as small as three, and we've seen as much as 11. The real, the number, the best number is that five to seven, with most going for seven. Every community is a little bit different in who they put on their screening committee. You know, oftentimes, there's, you know, sort of the statutory people that you might have, I shouldn't say statutory, they're the representatives of different boards. So you might have a finance committee. You might have a member of the school committee. You might have someone from the planning board. You might, but again, every community is different. Sometimes that isn't necessarily the direction that a board wants to head. They'd rather have more citizen, maybe a form of selectmen, maybe a couple of, maybe some local activists on particular issues that are significant within the community. Question that's always put is, should there be a department head on or a staff person? That can be effective, but it also can be somewhat challenging. So you just need to make sure that if they're on, that they understand what their role is, is to, again, to meet what you need, as well as, you know, obviously, they come with a lens of being a member of the staff, and they need to, you know, you want them to bring that, but you also want them to understand that their role here is to help you get the best possible candidates to you. The other challenge that always comes with staff people is they know staff people or department heads in other communities. And so, you know, we often have to sort of spend a little bit more time reminding them that they're not supposed to, when they see a resident, they're not supposed to call up that community and say, "Tell me about so-and-so." That's how confidentiality is broken, and we need to be careful of that.
What about the unions? I mean, almost everyone's unionized, but what's your feeling about having a representative from the union staff?
We've seen it done, and we've had, we've had success and challenges as a result of that. There's, I don't have a, yeah, I don't have a, I wish I could say, "Do this, don't do that." I, we've had union people, department heads, that have been very helpful in getting the right people. But we, we've also had the problems that there, you know, we had a department head in one community that was there, that was unionized, and their position was, they were there solely for the purpose of protecting the union. You know, they can have employee relations to be a priority, so there can be a lot of focus on that, but it has to be that broader, how does the organization operate most effectively, not a self-interest type of perspective.
You brought up an interesting term, and that's like the activist. I would think an activist that was focused on just one issue would be a little, would be more detrimental to the committee, or in your opinion, it really adds to the committee.
Again, it depends upon the situation. You know, there's certainly people that can, if that becomes their only lens, that becomes a problem, you know? And we've had that, where they've, there's been a, you know, there's a priority, for instance, to build a new facility, name the facility, right? And that's their sole purpose, or to buy a piece of property. If everything's done through that lens, that really is much too narrow. The role of a manager is to be able to work through, but if there's, if that's a priority, if, for instance, someone is focused on the necessity of investing in the capital of a community, well, that's more broad, you know? Maybe there's, because maybe there isn't a capital planning committee, or maybe there's, maybe the issue is, in one of the communities we work with, the activist was very focused on that notion of community engagement. How do we get people engaged in the community? Well, that wasn't, that might have been a specific topic, but that cuts across so many different aspects, that they wanted someone who was very focused on bringing that perspective to the position of Town Manager.
And we did put out, we did put out a call at some of our last meetings, did you guys recall? And we have received a handful of names that I think, I don't want to put their names out there publicly because I haven't, you know, spoken to them to get them to commit or anything yet, but it does cut across quite a few, you know, people that have experience in town, you know, on various committees and are pretty in tune with things, so.
Yep. So my only concern with the approach of people who are, you know, there's a small vocal minority, people who are very involved, who, which we appreciate, you know, it's always good to be involved, that might tend to dominate some of these things. So I'm just thinking about potentially broadening the search to that shortlist of names we all have sort of in our head, just to make sure that we're getting good representation across. across the town. That's my only thought.
And hopefully, we all talk to people that we think of like that, but they've got to reach out to us. This is a big time commitment, you know, so as much as you might want, you know, Joe Smith on the screening committee, unless Joe Smith's going to commit, you know, quite a bit of time, that they've got to be, you know, in it as well and committed, because it is a big commitment.
It is, but let me just put a, people need to come in, they need to take it seriously. And again, I'm telling you these sort of, and they're vague war stories, if you will, of what's happened in other communities. You know, we have a search that, you know, again, one of the reasons you want to be a manageable size, trying to schedule people, right? Seems like that should be pretty simple, but it isn't.
We know it's not from scheduling this meeting here.
Right, 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 yeah.
Alone, with so people.
We, we have a situation in a community where I put out, you know, I use duty polls to try to narrow dates down. We put out eighty-some-odd slots of time over the span of six weeks. We could not get
Wow.
everyone to, and we were offering Friday nights, Saturdays, days, evenings, and, you know, people have to be willing to make that commitment. On the other hand, I don't want to scare off people if they think that it's so time consuming. It's basically, once we get the dates down, it's basically, it could be as few as three meetings.
Three, like, couple-hour interview meetings, just to give us an idea?
A two-hour meeting
Okay.
to review resumes, because they get them in advance.
Okay.
And they have to put the time in to reviewing them. It's not a meeting, but it's time. They have to be willing to do that. Then there's the meeting to review, then it's the interviews. In the interviews, if we're interviewing, generally, we interview seven or eight people. Again, more than that, they all start to mesh together. Seven or eight people to narrow it down to that three or four. And the seven or eight should be interviewed either in the span of one full day or two half-days. And from that, they should be able to make a decision as to who to send on. If they can't, then we could have another brief meeting. And that, that generally can be done, you know, oftentimes, that, you know, for a period of time there, everything was being done by Zoom, but that last meeting can often be done, just by bringing people all together.
And again, just because it's the first time for all of us
Yeah, yeah.
doing something like that. Is that all in executive session?
Yes. Everything the screening committee does, other than their organizational work when they first meet, where they might get a report from me about the market, and, you know, what we've, the process, and very much what I'm doing now, except it was more specifics of what we've received, not names. Once we start reviewing resumes, that goes in executive session, it goes all the way to the point of selecting the people, and then their work is announced publicly as to who they've selected.
Okay.
And they need to take that, you know, they need to be confidential as well, so they need to commit confidentiality as well, as just another thing to call out, you know?
Yep.
With community members, with, you know, with all that as well.
Absolutely.
So two or three that come out of that committee is open to the public?
Yes, the people
Everyone will know that by the time, the finalists.
The finalists, yep, the finalists.
They'll be brought to, they'll be brought to you. They'll, they'll, they'll make their announcement to you. We will work with them. Generally, it'll be myself in the chair of the screening committee will make that announcement.
Probably more towards Leah, again, because I'm not sure of the protocol. The committee, are we deciding that, or are you, is that ultimately your goal to decide?
I think that, I think we can do it. You know, I'm trying to balance, you know, bringing everyone in, but then at some points, there's some things that we just need to make decisions and move forward on to. So, you know, I think Christina can definitely send you the names that have gone out. And if there's people not on there that you'd like to see, maybe you can, you know, talk to them, but I, I have a feeling that I would like, I don't want to just say to someone, we'd like you on the committee, you know, a conversation should happen, and they should put in, you know, a formal request to be part of it, is my thought. And then, we'll see where we end up for numbers. So we might end up with five to seven people. And then, you know, we don't have to get into, we pick this one over this one. And I think we need to look at our board as well, you know, do we want, I think Bernie said maybe one to two board of selectmen members typically, obviously, we can't go over that, then we get into meeting law issues and
Yep, yep. And communities certainly have done that. They put one or two members on. Not everyone, but
But yeah.
Many.
But we have the ultimate, you know, decision in the end, you know, all of us, so.
One or two members from, from where?
The select board.
From our board.
So we'd be advising ourselves?
You'd be a member of the selection committee here.
How did that work, Bernie, in practice? Having select board members on committees?
There's always a pro and a con. The pro is that, you know, it sort of helps assure the board members of how the process unfolded. The con, if you will, is it could, it's choosing, if you, one person or two people would have had more sort of bites at the apple.
Yeah, I mean, my personal gut is, you know, we turn that over to people.
I agree.
Okay, so it sounds like we're all on board with that then?
With no
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't want to, you know, make any decisions, but you know, in talking about it, I think, you know, we all have people that we think will be good at mind, we have to make sure that group's balanced.
Well, and you're right. And if you have a number of people that want to be on it, and you want to make sure that they're, have their, that they all have the opportunity to serve, then you want to have as many slots available as possible.
So I think, to me, it seems like if a select board member's on, it's taking away from
Right, okay.
the community.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
One of your people will be there anyway, right?
Will be, right.
Keep it on track.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Make sure it doesn't go off the rails.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, we, we, again, we sit down and work with them in reviewing the resumes, and going through the backgrounds of the people, the strengths and the weaknesses of each one. We then, we do all the managing of the scheduling of the interviews after they've chosen who to, who to move on to for an interview. And I'll tell you, what we, what we have found are a technique that we've developed, and we'll present this to the screening committee. And we kind of leave it up to them, but screening committees have generally all accepted our offer and found it to be most helpful if we do the questions. So we work with the screening committee, so okay, here's our questions, and they'll give us their thoughts to make sure that they get the information they need so that they are doing the job that they want. We will then act as a facilitator. Rather than the idea of having seven members and seven different people asking questions and going around a table, what we found to be a less stilted method, more of a dialogue, is we would set forth, there'll be topics, you know, ten topics, twelve topics, and there'll be a lead question for each topic that we will put out there. Then there's, we give them ideas of follow-up questions that they may want to ask. So when we're talking about municipal finance, we may talk about the budgeting process and how they go about the budgeting process, what's their philosophy of developing budget, what's been their experience? We want to know, you know, what they've done as managers, or as assistant managers. But one of the questions that we want to, or follow-up questions that we would propose to people is, ask what their experience is with financial forecasting, fiscal forecasting. How much do they use fiscal forecasting? What's their experience with financial policies that drive the decision-making? Those types of questions that we will, you know, we can ask them, but it keeps it at more of a seven people in the room, as well as one of us having a dialogue with this candidate. Screening committees have found that helpful, that because one of the issues we have is, we don't want screening committee members focused on the one question they have to ask, and they, they don't get to really listen. The other is, because it becomes more of a dialogue, it becomes, even without this process, it sometimes turns into this. So for instance, if we're talking about, I'll go back to fiscal conditions. If we're talking about municipal finance, ultimately, what it often comes to is, we just need more revenue. That's how you, you know, you can't always be cutting, you sometimes have to find new revenue. That leads to a discussion of economic development. Well, we've seen it happen. We'll do this whole question on that, the candidate will start talking about what they've done for developing new sources of revenue, grants, economic development, and so on. And then the very next question will be, talk to us about what you've done with economic development. Now, if we're asking the questions, we, we can take the liberty of saying, well, I think we've already done this. If committee members have other follows-ups, they can ask them at this point. If a committee member is sitting there, and they've been assigned the economic development question, they're going to feel that they have to ask the question. And it becomes a, again, more of a stilted type of process that way. So.
Okay.
All right. So that's, that's where the screening committee.
Okay.
All right. So, they've done their work under number seven, they've done their work, they've done their interviews, selected the finalists. We do that reference check. I just want to stress on that, that we go out, we, we will spend as much time, in some cases, we will interview the references, the individual references, with as much time as the candidate has been interviewed. So, you know, someone will spend forty-five minutes to an hour talking to one reference and saying, what can you tell me? Sometimes it's shorter, but it can go that long, if need be. And then, from that, if their references and the backgrounds are clear, we would then bring them to the board. We have had situations where people have not placed everything on their resume, and we've discovered that, and we've had to flag that for the screening committee, and we go back and we withdraw that name. We've had people that have not had the proper, the stated academic or educational credentials. We've had to remove those people. And, you know, references that haven't been quite as clean as we would like, and we've had to do that.
And I don't, I'm trying not to get into the weeds. I've done a lot of these, as I mentioned to you, but in terms of references, is it solely the candidate that provides the references, or do you insist on a direct report of somebody, you know, that isn't necessarily on the candidate's list of references?
Yeah, we, we don't just take their list of references, we tell them what we're looking for. We'll say, we'd like someone that, you know, we want someone you, we don't want to just have, you know, people that know you. We want people that you've worked with, we want people in your current community, you know, we want more information about those people. So we do, drive that. Now, there are some situations where that becomes a challenge.
Right.
And so we try to work with them around that. And we, we do reserve the right, when speaking with them, that if one of their references leads us to someone else we feel we should talk to, that we will contact those people as well. And then it gets, it's all in your court at that point. We work with you. In this case, we're showing this at the, towards the beginning of January to the middle of January, where you interview the candidates. We throw off a couple of optional steps to the process here, if there's some type of staff interaction, or some type of community meet and greet. Some communities do it, some don't. So, but we, so we put that out there as an option. And then you make your selection, and we'll provide you with whatever assistance we can as you negotiate the contract.
And, and looking at our timeline, based on your experience, is, is January the right time to be making offers? Is that a good time, a bad time, because we do have that level of flexibility?
Yeah. You know, it's not as, it's not like a school department, where schools work off of school years. You do have the fiscal year issue, that if people are getting ready to go into town meeting, they may have a sense of obligation to stay with the community that they're with for a little bit longer. If you have flexibility and can do some type of transitional phase, there isn't a, you know, I think that this, this works. But if it spills over into February a little bit, because keep in mind that this just takes us to the point of selection and negotiation of a contract. It's then a thirty or sixty-day notice period. And even better, if the, if you're the candidate you really want, needs to spend a little bit more time with their current community, you have the flexibility of having someone already in place to be there.
Yeah, because most of these people have contracts where they have to give thirty, sixty, ninety days notice.
Thirty to sixty days, yeah. Thirty to sixty is the, I would say, is where most are.
Okay.
Yep. So it's a, you know, we can do this process. If you will look at another, another timeline that we put out to a community, this is built around your situation. But we've, have done these in as, as short as, I think, ten weeks, which is very rushed. Most of, about fourteen to sixteen weeks. So this, you're also up against the, the issue of the, the holidays
Yeah.
which enters into it.
Tough time for availability for people.
Right, right. So having this done, having your selection by the screening committee done in early December, that gives us time over that, the holidays and a little bit later to contact the references to do the background checks.
Okay.
If there are internal candidates, how do you, how do you handle them?
It's up to the screening committee how they want to handle them. Probably, in most cases, is a, is a process of courtesy interviews, if nothing else. If there are internal candidates, that's a typical question that we receive from other candidates, that they may ask us. We abide by the confidentiality, that nobody's supposed to know who's applied for a position. So we don't broadcast that out, that someone's applied. However, if an internal has moved on through the process, in it, that becomes a topic or a question for candidates, we have to be honest with them, that they would know that coming in. But generally, what we do is, we explain to candidates that the board is looking for the best possible candidate for the town. If that's internal, that's internal. If it's, they want the biggest pool, the best choices, they want a choice. And that's what we, we stress.
Did you have a question, Doc?
No.
No, okay. So I think from here, maybe you and I can just talk a little bit more granular, and
Sure.
you know, again, if there's other names that come in over the next couple of weeks, and I think we'll just need to get a date on the calendar to have you back.
Okay.
And really start building what we see in the proposal, you know, for the community piece, and really what we're all looking for, because I think laying that foundation for what we're looking for is probably one of the most important parts of the process.
It, it is. And, and, you know, again, that's, that's that step number one, the consultation with the select board. So we would see that taking place in the, during the month of September, to, for the, you know, from the middle to almost the end. And we would try to work around a schedule to, to do that one-on-ones, those one-on-ones.
Okay, so those are one-on-ones?
Those are one-on-ones.
So nothing we need to, you know, set aside a big chunk of time in our meetings?
No, the, the other, the other time that we would, the next time we really need to meet with the board, I think you and I can have regular conversations about this whole process. The next time we need to meet with the board is probably sometime in the beginning of October.
Okay. Okay. All right. And I mean, you've been very accessible so far, so I assume you're accessible to, you know, the board if they have any questions.
Absolutely.
Always feel free to filter them through me, but, you know, by no means feel free to reach out if, if there's a question that you do have as well.
Actually, I remembered to bring business guides. I fell out of the practice during the whole
I think we all did.
pandemic thing. So, but yeah. So I can give you this, and you can contact me with any questions that you might have.
Great. Any other questions?
Yeah. So Bernard, this is probably a question I would have asked if we were involved in the contract process that brought you here. So it's purely in the interest of information gathering. And so what I'm, what I'm thinking about is, you mentioned two hundred or so searches, of which
Ninety. We've done ninety.
Ninety of two hundred. You did ninety of about two hundred?
Right.
Yeah. So is there any statistics or any information about that two hundred, the ninety subset? I'm just
Sure.
information gathering.
Yeah, in terms of
Terms of
Success rates. Success rates.
Success rates, yeah, so like thinking about pay, I'm thinking about tenure, those types of things.
Yeah, well, of the ninety, I don't have those off the top of my head. I will tell you that of the ninety, I think probably somewhere around ten have, this is over the last six years, right? Since, first one we did was the town of Winchton in December of fifteen that was placed. He did leave. They wanted to keep him, but he left to take another position. It's really only been, I think in terms of people that have been, where it hasn't worked out, I think we're probably looking at four. But, but I, I'm very happy to say that in all but one case, it comes to me at least in mind, we were asked to come back and do it again.
Okay.
And the reason was, stated to me, and I'd be happy to give you that, the specific community and you can contact them, they said, it wasn't you, it was us. We don't choose, we help, bring you to a point. And in that particular case, it was, it was, it was an interesting story because the chair of the board called me up and said, you know, when we hired so-and-so, he said, I know I wasn't the first choice of the search, I wasn't what the search consultant wanted. And so that was very helpful to us when it didn't work out. You know, they, they remembered that and they reached out to us again, so. But yeah, in terms of tenure, pretty much everyone is still there. If they're not there, it was because the, another job came up. We don't poach, so whoever you get, we will never call them. And.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? No? Okay.
You know, the audience.
Yes, the audience. All right, well.
All right.
I think, I think that's it. This is, again, really just introductions.
Sure.
Set the stage, but there's a lot of work and details, you know, to come, but I think it makes everyone feel comfortable that we have a plan because although we have a lot, some time, you know, everyone gets kind of itching.
Yeah, and I, you know, I kind of, I did want to say that, sort of to echo that, you, you're in a great place. You know, you're, you don't want to be in a place where, certainly we've seen where someone takes another job and you need to act that fast. You know, you need to get it done and if someone's giving a thirty-day notice, that doesn't give us, that doesn't give you time to go through just the first phase. If you do it like this, you, you really have to, then you're in a position where you have to get an interim manager or move someone in the organization up on an acting basis and you're, you're in a very enviable position that you have time here.
And I think culturally, we're a community of consensus, like there's a saying here, there's either a fast no or a slow yes. So I think we're a community that likes to involve, involve everyone and bring them along and just culturally, you know, I think that that's kind of who we are.
Yep, yep, so. And, you know, and then going back to Seth, to your question, in the proposal, I think we gave every search we've ever done. And you can call any of those people.
And I can tell you who I spoke to who just wrapped up one and I spent, she spent quite a bit of time. She was very helpful in, in talking through like lessons learned or, you know, just anything. It was a really great conversation, so.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much.
All right.
All right.
All right, you just need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? All right, thanks so much.